I'd like to call the November twelfth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Pahn.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Fryline.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
First order of business today is council minutes for the meeting of October eighth,
two thousand and fifteen. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the city council approve the meeting minutes from October eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Chair?
Ms. Newton. Aye.
Mr. Pahn.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Ms. Mary Fryline.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next is matters of special privilege, and I'm going to take an opportunity today to recognize two staff members who have worked very hard in winning awards for the city. The first is Michelle DeWitt, our Economic Development Director, and would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about the award that the Economic Development Authority in your office received? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Development Office, the Economic Development Authority in the city, I give the city total credit for winning the, one of the Alley Awards this year from the Cultural Alliance of Greater Hampton Roads. So this is in recognition of the city's work around the arts district, the creative economy, and the public art sculpture. So we should be very proud. These are coveted awards, so congratulations, Susan.
Thank you, Michelle. The second is an award for Digital City Award, and Mark Barham, our IT Director, is going to tell us a little bit about that. Mark, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, members of council. This year, for, this is now the third year in a row, the city has been recognized by the Center for Digital Government, which is a national print digital media conglomerate that publishes these awards. All centered around local government, so it focuses solely on local government, and has to do with how local governments use technology in a myriad of ways. Our population category is less than seventy-five thousand people. Obviously, we are on the low end of that spectrum, and the folks that we kind of go up against, if you will, are cities like Evanston, Illinois, Palo Alto, California. So we're very excited and thrilled to receive this award for the third year in a row.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. Next order of business, public hearings. The first is a public comment period for the appointment to the Williamsburg-Jane City County School Board. At this point, we have three applicants during this public hearing. Anyone can nominate an individual if they wish. We have a number of speakers' cards, and we've received some communication electronically on this. The communication we've received to date have been letters from David Watson, Donald Kohler, Susan Brant Smith, Christopher Del Negro, Joseph Fuentes, Tinsley Gold, and Mary Kaygo, and those will be added into the public record as well. I'm going to suggest that individuals keep their remarks to three to five minutes because we do have a number of speakers. The first speaker is, I think, I'll ask Ruth Larson to come up. Ruth is a member of the school board, former chair of the school board, and I think you're going to speak to Ms. Emanuel.
I am going to do so. Thank you so much, all of you, for letting me speak today. I did not realize that I was jumping on top of your appointment, public speaking, so I appreciate you letting me talk. I just wanted to take a moment, as Ms. Emanuel gets ready to finish her term on the school board, and I just want to say what an outstanding job she has done, and how proud, really, the city should be of her. And I know, for me personally, she's been a mentor, she's been encouraging of our school board getting involved on a national level, on a state level, and being very involved on a local level. So frankly, there are big shoes to be filled, and so I don't envy the job that you're about to do. But I did just want to come to you and thank you for her appointment, and to thank her for her service to our school board. Thank you.
Ruth, thank you very much for being here, and congratulations on your recent electoral win, and we look, we all look forward to working with you in a collaborative relationship going forward. So, thank you. I have a number of speakers' cards, I'm going to call those first, but anyone who wishes to address counsel on this matter may do so. You don't have to fill out a speaker's card. The first card I have is Bob Welsh. When you come forward, if you state your name and address. I believe you're a former school board member yourself.
It's true, Mayor Holman, I was going to hide that fact. Thank you very much, Mayor Holman, members of the board, fellow citizens. It's a pleasure to be here today. I feel honored to be here to recommend that you appoint Julie Hummel. We have been very fortunate to have Elise Emanuel. It's hard to imagine doing better at replacing her than somebody of Julie Hummel's quality. I've had five children, all, excuse me, in the public schools. The oldest graduated from Lafayette forty years ago. The youngest will graduate in seventeen, twenty seventeen. So that range, all five of them have enjoyed the schooling we get there, and it takes, I think, someone of the knowledge, wit, attention, concentration that I know Julie Hummel has. We've worked together in at least one issue, redistricting of the schools, a few years ago. I found her tactful, intelligent, thoughtful, so easy to work with. I just don't think you could do better than appoint Julie Hummel, so I sincerely hope you'll do that, and I extend, as you will, I'm sure, congratulations to Elise Emanuel on a very successful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, I have Todd Meradian. Todd, welcome. Todd's also a member of the city's Economic Development Authorities. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, and members of the council, and fellow citizens. I come here today having read about the three people who have put themselves forward and want to say, "I don't speak against anyone." In fact, we're all sure that what these people share is commitment, civic pride, and commitment to our children and our schools that makes them all admirable, and I wanted to put my comments in favor of Julie Hummel, to support Julie Hummel in that context. I also don't really speak to support Julie Hummel so much as because I think it's such a wonderful opportunity for our children and our schools and our city to have someone with Julie's capabilities volunteer to serve. I work with Julie at the College of William &amp; Mary. I'm familiar with her resume, and her experience, and her credentials. She has gone to the Williamsburg-Jane City County Schools, and then went on to the University of Virginia. She has had three children who matriculated entirely through the public school system here, Williamsburg-Jane City County. She has a master's degree from the college in higher education leadership, and she works with me at the college, and I can speak to that. She and I collaborate on new initiatives and new offerings from the college, and I can, I've worked very closely with her and extensively on putting together new degree programs, thinking about what it takes to have a logical, coherent curriculum that adds value to the students and their lives, and I can say that there is no one better. In fact, I said these words yesterday to the Foundation Board for the School of Business, the Mason School of Business, the same exact recommendation, and the appreciation to the sponsor who is paying for Julie's position, that no one could have done better over the last eighteen months in taking what had been a fairly old-fashioned faculty. And those of you who have worked with faculty know that we are some of, well, faculty, I'm now the associate dean for faculty, I recognize that they're the brightest and most creative people that we know, and yet that they're set in certain patterns, and Julie gently, persuasively has moved that faculty to where today I would describe them as agile and innovative, and that's no small accomplishment. But more than those experiences and credentials and degrees, I wanted to talk quickly about Julie's character. Julie has exactly the positive, optimistic attitude, the quick smile, the high energy that we all want to work with. When Ms. Larson was up here, you wished her well and said we look forward to working with her collaboratively. And those of us that serve, I serve on a much smaller capacity as a volunteer citizen, but we understand that sometimes if you're going to be working late, or you're going to be working long hours, you're going to be working on something where people come to it from fundamentally different positions. What you really want is not somebody with the right degrees or the right experience, but somebody with the right temperament, somebody that will compromise, that will listen carefully so that others can communicate and speak clearly and in an organized way and sparingly, so that her ideas are heard, are integrated into the process, but aren't overwhelming. And I can tell you that after long hours, sometimes late into the night, sometimes in the, Julie has led our efforts with CHEV, the state bureaucracy, and I can tell you that she has infinite patience, and infinite's a specific word, it means a specific thing, and we have not found the end of Julie's, and therefore I predict we never will, because she dealt with CHEV. So it is really about her character, on behalf of our children, our teachers, and our schools, that I recommend Julie Hummel for the school board. Thank you for your time. It's a great honor to get to come here and speak for someone like Julie.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Next card I have is Susan Barton. Sue, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, city council members, fellow citizens. I too am here on behalf of Julie Hummel. I've known Julie for over a decade, first meeting her when we worked together on the PTA at Matthew Whaley. I've always admired many of Julie's qualities, but it's her ability to get things done, and a leadership style where she kind of rallies around, rallies people around her, and provides an effective and inclusive environment. We had a wealth of willing volunteers back in the day when we were at Matthew Whaley. Julie doesn't shy away from tough jobs that no one else is willing to take on, whether it's adding an additional job of chairing the Strawberry Festival at Matthew Whaley, which was no small undertaking, being the largest event of the school year there while she was PTA president, and also serving on the school redistricting committee, which I have to say was a job that I wouldn't have wanted to be in her place. Julie has firsthand knowledge of all of the schools in our school system, as has been said. She continues with her parent involvement, or continued with her parent involvement when all three of her children went from Matthew Whaley to Berkeley Middle School, and then on to Lafayette. Her youngest child just graduated this past May from Lafayette. She's seen our schools from another perspective, substituting in the school office back at Matthew Whaley, and also being a substitute teacher at Berkeley Middle School. Julie's interest and involvement in education didn't end, or doesn't end, with her own children. She received her master's assistant set in ed policy planning and leadership in two thousand and thirteen. She works in higher education at William &amp; Mary, and has a personal interest in assuring that the students from Williamsburg-Jane City County are well-prepared for their futures beyond graduation. The city of Williamsburg would be very fortunate to have this intelligent, articulate, thoughtful woman as a representative for the Williamsburg-Jane City County School Board, and I'm confident that Julie would use her wealth of experience in education to work diligently to represent all of the students in Williamsburg-Jane City County, as well as representing the interests of those of us who are citizens in the city of Williamsburg. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue. The next speaker's card I have is Clarence Wilson. Clarence, welcome. Clarence, as many of you know, is the president of the York, James City County, Williamsburg NAACP.
I have a problem with that, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, Clarence.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, members of the Williamsburg City Council. My name is Clarence Wilson. I'm a resident of James City County, but I speak today as president of the York-Jane City, Williamsburg NAACP, and its five hundred members, a number of whom are Williamsburg City residents. At our monthly meeting on November ninth, the branch members approved support for the appointment of Mrs. Dolores Bagby to represent the city of Williamsburg on the Williamsburg-Jane City County School Board. Mrs. Bagby was a longtime teacher and administrator in the Washington DC and Richmond Public Schools, and who believes every student deserves the opportunity to get a quality education. She will bring a deep understanding of the instructional needs of the classroom and the administrative challenges faced by our schools today. She believes that setting high expectations for teachers and students, providing a safe learning environment, coupled with a strong fiscal and personnel accountability, are important elements of a successful school system. The branch often partners with organizations where Mrs. Bagby is a member, and most often is a leader. My experience has been that she's a critical thinker, works hard, and is always, always prepared. She's a strong leader who focuses on achieving excellence in whatever she does. I believe she will bring the same drive for excellence to the work as a member of the school board. We in the NAACP also believe there's a critical need for diversity on our school board, given the almost twenty percent minority population in our schools, many of whom reside in the city of Williamsburg. We believe this is a voice that could add context and a fresh perspective to many of the issues the school board will face in the coming months. In closing, the NAACP believes Mrs. Bagby brings the skills, knowledge, and passion for strong public education that will be an asset to the school board. We believe she will be an important voice in helping the board deal with issues such as the fourth middle schools, the crowding issues at Berkeley Middle Schools, and other changes needed to make our school system a model of the twenty-first century learning environment, needed to prepare students for the, for today's demanding world. I thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments in support of Ms. Bagby, and I also offer my congratulations to Mrs. Emanuel for the work she's done at the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Kiara Earl. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kiara Earl, and I am a senior at the College of William &amp; Mary. I'm here to support Mrs. Dolores Bagby. She serves as the graduate advisor for our international service organization, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I've known Ms. Bagby for almost two and a half years now, and I can say that she has been a wonderful woman to work with professionally and personally. I haven't experienced many who really take the care and attention of each individual member of an organization, as she does, and she does it well. She is always available, and she's always organized, and whenever there's a question, she always has the answer. And for the chances she doesn't, she can always find it. I have to say that I believe she's very capable professionally, but really what makes her different, and what makes her stand out, is her personal care of others. She's never dismissed anyone. If an idea isn't, if an idea isn't what it needs to be, she always works to make it work. She takes everyone's consideration, and I truly appreciate her, and I can only recommend her highly. I think any council or any organization would benefit from her work and her effort. And I want to thank you all for having me.
Thank you very much. Next card I have is Marie Whit. White? Sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie White, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you on behalf of Dolores Bagby. Mrs. Bagby is well-qualified to represent the Williamsburg community as a member of the Williamsburg-Jane City Council, County School Board. I have lived in Jane City County for twelve years, and met Mrs. Bagby through our affiliation with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, which is an international organization committed to community service with chapters across the globe. Here in Williamsburg, our chapter is Lambda Lambda Omega, and our members have been of service to this community for more than thirty years. Among other endeavors, the chapter has engaged in educational programs at the various school levels in Williamsburg, Jane City County, provided health awareness programs, facilitated community dialogue, and awarded scholarships to high school seniors in Williamsburg, Jane City County, and York. In the course of her many years of service with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Mrs. Bagby has served as our chapter president, vice president, parliamentarian, undergraduate advisor for our members at the College of William &amp; Mary, scholarship chairperson, creator of the monthly communication booklet, and a member on numerous committees. Mrs. Bagby has served with excellence in all capacities, implementing the organization's strategic plans. She has demonstrated effective leadership skills with the ability to motivate, challenge, inspire, and energize. She is a consensus builder who actively listens, engages in constructive dialogue, offers creative approaches, and brings thoughtful analysis to the situation at hand. In her professional career, Mrs. Bagby has worked successfully as a math educator, instructing students in the primary grades, and administering the parent resource program. Her breadth of experience has resulted in an understanding and development of positive relationships with students, parents, administrators, and community leaders. You will find that she is empathetic, committed, dedicated, and fair. Mrs. Bagby is a constant learner, open to ideas, and aware of the challenges that face our students and our community, as technology and globalization demand that we continuously innovate and adapt. With her proven knowledge, skills, talents, personal qualities, and achievements, Mrs. Bagby is well-positioned to contribute to the decision-making required to continue to graduate students who are prepared and competitive participants, ready to pursue the opportunities of the twenty-first century workforce. Mrs. Bagby is an outstanding and compassionate individual, friend, and colleague. If selected, Mrs. Bagby will be an effective and accountable representative for the children and for the community of Williamsburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Next card I have is Julie Hummel.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and the rest. I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. I'm not going to speak for any, I'll look forward to talking to all of you next week with your questions and answers, and I also am really excited that I'm not the only applicant. On Friday, I was the only applicant, and I was like, "This is not good for the city of Williamsburg." So I'm very, very excited that we have several people that are interested in this position, and that have stepped forward, and I think you can't go wrong with any of us.
Thank you, Julie. Next is Reverend Robert Whitehead. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, fellow citizens. My name is Rob Whitehead. I serve as pastor at New Zion Baptist Church located thirty-nine ninety-one Longyear Road, and I've served there for twenty-four and a half years. I'm here today in response, in regards to Sister Dolores Bagby. I've known Mrs. Bagby for over thirty years, when we all lived in the Richmond area. I think Miss Bagby brings the skills, she brings the commitment level, and she brings the passion to serve on the school board in this school district. I think she will offer some new insights that will be helpful as this community is growing, as we are a more diverse community. We have a number of learners in New Zion Baptist Church who attended the school system here, and I think Sister Dolores Bagby has an insight on how it was best for our students in order that they may excel and achieve. We are living in different times now, in terms of the educational times in which we live, and so our students, our learners, have to be equipped when they leave the school district here. And I think Mrs. Dolores Bagby will add a new sense of freshness, a new insight. She's a collaborator, she knows how to negotiate, she knows what to do, and she knows priorities. So again, I recommend highly, without reservation, Mrs. Dolores Bagby.
Ms. Emanuel, congratulations for your time, Sharon. Thank you, Reverend. Final speaker's card I have is Elise Emanuel. Elise, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me the honor, having served as the school board representative for these last twelve years. It's been quite an honor, and I'm so thrilled that there are three applicants, but I thought at one point there was only going to be one. I know you have a difficult choice, but I would like to speak to Julie Hummel for one reason, because of her active involvement in the school system. The things that I look, that we will have trouble with, is the fourth middle school and the redistricting of that fourth middle school, and I personally believe, having been through that several times, it's, you need to have someone who's tough and can represent the city well. Probably all of them can, but Julie has had that experience of having advised the school board on redistricting, and I think that's critical. I also just making sure that we keep the middle, fourth middle school on track and happening, because Berkeley, as has been noted, is very crowded. We need that fourth middle school. We had originally going to do it before the recession. Now the recession is over, and we're trying to get ready for, to get over that. That's, that really is very critical, and I hope, we really need the support of people there. So I thank you, and I urge you to support Julie or any of the other candidates. I'm sure we'll be fine for the school position.
Thank you, Elise. Thank you very much for all you. I think, as you know, council appreciates all you've done for this community over the years, so thank you very much. That's the end of the speaker's cards I have, but now anyone who wishes to address this issue, please come forward, state your name and address, and... Mr. Whitely, welcome.
Mayor Holman, members of city council, I'm Dr. John Whitely. I use that labeling because Virginia Tech means a lot to me, and I think someone running for city council has that leverage also. Tech gave me, made me work very hard for that. William &amp; Mary has a close connection, too, because of having the masses of education there. There's also a William &amp; Mary connection within the candidates. I say all this to reference a point of view that I worked for about fifteen years with the Virginia Department of Education, and know full well the demands that are expected of persons there and also of school systems to deliver. It was through that role that set, oh, in nineteen seventy-two, three, four, I met Ms. Emanuel, because I was working with a friend of mine, Reggie Smith, from the Virginia Education Association. Ms. Emanuel had quite a leadership role here. She is a piece of work, and she is going to be so missed, I know, but we have three great candidates who can step forward. Way to go, Elise. I want to speak specifically to the issue of the future of the schools in Williamsburg-Jane City County. I want whoever comes forward and prevails as our representative on city council to be ultimately aware of the unique positioning of the city of Williamsburg and our contractual arrangement with the county, with Jane City County. We have to be ever, whoever steps forward has to be ever clear in understanding of the importance of the city of Williamsburg having a presence, and having, having strength within that type of, within that relationship. I think that is incumbent, and I would hope that as you interview these individuals, that you push that point very, very strongly. Who knows what another day might bring with leadership in Jane City County, and the effect it might have, not only on our schools, but also on our city. Lastly, I am feeling, I feel very strongly and committed to the issue of diversity. I have studied rather closely the applications of all three folk, and find them to be quite, all quite worthy. I find Ms. Bagby to bring an element of qualification that exceeds the other two. Any person who has taught in DC public schools and in Richmond City public schools knows full well the demands of public education, and its, and its impact on the growth and development of our youth. So I, with, with great pride, while, while feeling comfortable and okay about Ms. Hummel and Ms. Hertzler, give my full support to Ms. Bagby, and hope that you will find such in your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Thank you for your time. Can you hear me all right? I'm here to speak, my name's Michael George, and I live in Gloucester County. I work in the town here. But I'm here to speak for Linda Hertzler, and she's my sister, so bias disclosed, so there. But, um, last I heard for the past few years, her daughter's just about grown, almost finished, she's gone through these, the school system here in town. And last I heard, she was going to get back into teaching, because she used to be a teacher. That was her first love, she doesn't need the money. It was her first love. And, but then I hear about the school board thing, and I thought, well, that's really interesting. Maybe she, maybe she could help you guys. She volunteers a lot in the schools, she works a lot with the teachers and the parents, and they're the ones that encouraged her to fill out the applications, I understand it. I wish more of them were here for you to hear from them, and maybe you'll get another chance. But what I wanted to say, you know, she's a, she's a concerned parent, she's, she loves Williamsburg and James City County and loves here. She's, and, well, and she was a really good teacher, too. When you pull back the curtain, I guess, on what someone needs to do for the school board and for the, for the county and for the city, takes a lot more, I'm hearing these qualifications, these other people have, it takes some very interesting qualifications, I think. What, what she has, she's a part business owner with her husband, with a business in town, and she has worked in the financial, she does the bookkeeping, the accounting, the financial, all those things. For the past 20 years, she was much more involved before, but she still signs the checks today. And so she understands the financial kinds of things to a, to a large degree, which could be a big contributor, money budgets and all that sort of thing. The other thing which I think is interesting is, I wish I could tell you the stories of her work with the schools here now, you've probably heard some of them. I just remember when she started out and she was a teacher, she started a school, and she was a drama teacher, she majored in theater, and that weird theater major. She does bookkeeping and accounting and finance now, and she left teaching after a few years. Why? Because she could. Her next job, she made three times the money. She's never, she's always been good at whatever she did. But at that school, it was one drama class, and after a few years, it was, her schedule was full of drama classes. It was the most popular class in the school. The children loved it. She got letters from parents about how it changed their students' lives. And it wasn't just drama classes, it was the band, you know, they played the music for the musicals. And the art students did the, did the sets and designs, and the administration was involved, and the parents were involved. Now, she was young then, it was a while ago. But someone that can pull that off, it takes a lot of collaboration, a lot of understanding, respect, and appreciation, all those kinds of qualities that can get things done. And that's what she's doing in her volunteer role, and she would like to bring some of those skills, as I understand it, to these issues that we, that we have with the school systems here. So I hope that helps. Good luck with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon. I'm Dolores Bagby, and first of all, I want to thank those persons who spoke on my behalf. I am honored to be considered as a member of the school board here. And all I can say to you is, if selected, I promise to give you 110%, not just 100%, because I do believe that our children deserve that from each of us. And to the community, I say to you, I want to be the kind of leader who not only steps out, but the kind of leader who steps in. Because to step in, it means you have to get in, you have to work, you have to move, and you have to interact with people to make things happen. And so I am delighted to be a part of this. I say to you, whatever your decision is, I know that the candidates who are positioned here, the three of us, I think any one of us would do a great job, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Winston Shepherd. I live in the city. I grew up here. I went to, with the exception of Matthew Whaley, I went to every school in the system, Berkeley, Rollsburg, where Ms. Emanuel was my very first teacher upon moving to Williamsburg. So who remembers Bruton Heights, James Blair, first graduating class to Lafayette? I'm here today to speak on behalf of Ms. Hertzler. Our families have been friends for many years. I came to know her more closely in the last three years when I returned to town. Certainly, she has a very well vested interest in the, in the city, with a very successful and well-respected business here. I know many of her friends, I know many of her coworkers and employees, all of which are just the top caliber type people. Says a lot about someone with the caliber of people you surround yourself with. Very familiar with her involvement with the Williamsburg Community Pool. She threw herself into that effort vigorously, brought a lot of energy and life to the pool, which I understand had been on harder times before her entrance. And I just believe someone with her judgment and energy would be nothing but a benefit to our school board here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Caroline Corney, and I live here in the city of Williamsburg. I'm here to throw my support to Linda Hertzler. She was the first person I met when I moved here in Williamsburg in 2003. Actually ended up buying her house, and I was so impressed when I, I walked in, and she was so gracious, and I just felt like I had already been here for a while, and she has that kind of personality that just makes you feel welcome. And looking around her yard and her garden, I realized what a passion she has for, for gardening, and it turns out for anything she undertakes, she really puts her mind to it and throws her whole heart and soul behind it. And I think that would make her a really great school board member, because I know she's also, her second passion is also about children. And her daughter and my kids were also in Matthew Whaley together, and she was one of the parents that was always there when there was anything to come up for PTA work or volunteer work. And I also work for her now, and I see what a great business mind she has, and just anything that she does, she really concentrates and throws her whole heart and soul into it, and I think that would make her a really valuable member to this school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Kaukaw Kapo, and I'm a senior at the College of William &amp; Mary. I have had the absolute pleasure of knowing Mr. Dolores Bagby for the past two and a half years, as she serves as our graduate advisor for the New Pride Chapter of Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And along with everything everyone has said, one thing that I can really push is that Mr. Dolores is very passionate about giving back to the community. And one thing that's very special, special is that she's able to encourage others to be passionate about giving back, and I think that that's, that's something very special that you don't find in a lot of people. And she's always just encouraging us in everything that we do to make sure that we're giving back to the community that has given so much to us. And so I think that she will be a great asset to the school board.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to the school board appointment? Joe, welcome.
My name is Joe Hertzler, and Linda Hertzler is my wife, so I'm here to speak in favor of her. You may think it's somewhat self-serving for me to speak in favor of my wife, but those of you who are in public service know that it's not self-serving at all, it's, in fact, it's probably insane. For those of you who have been in, doing this job, it's a tremendous amount of work. I've been involved with the city for quite a number of years, and I've seen what it takes for somebody to be a good member of a board or a commission. I've seen what it takes to be an effective member, and I'm here to tell you that my wife can do it. Linda Hertzler has got what it takes to be an effective board member. I've seen enough people do different activities, and I know what it takes. Linda has got it. She will throw herself into this thing to the point where she'll probably drive me crazy, but she will throw herself in. I've seen her do it when she, she directs plays at Matthew Whaley, has for a number of years now. When she's in the middle of that, she is completely focused on it. It's unbelievable, and I know she'll do the same thing here. She loves the kids, she walks out of the school just floating on cloud nine, has a tremendous ability with, and love and passion for that. She also has a great business head. You know, I'm probably the dreamer in the business. I'm the one who's always trying to bite off more than we can chew, and she follows up with understanding of budgets and understanding of how to get things done with very limited resources. And as you all know, the school systems are doing an important job with very limited resources. Linda can help. Put her in the mix, I'm telling you, she'll make a difference.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Toby Wolf.
Toby Lane, or Bob Lane, as the case may be, for the resident of Williamsburg. And I did want to speak on behalf of Linda Hertzler. I've known Linda for, well, a number of years, probably eight or 10 at least, and the family. And I don't want to reiterate a lot of the other things you said, but I had the opportunity to talk with her earlier this week, or late last week, earlier this week, I'm sorry, about applying for this position, and I was repressed by some of the things she said, and I, and I think one of her strong qualities that you've heard before is the commitment. When she, when she commits herself to something, I've known that from a personal point of view, but I'm confident that she will put her heart and soul into it, and, and as you've heard, she has some great qualities and great possibilities to do a lot of good work if, if she's got the commitment. And I'm sure she does have that commitment, it's very clear. So I do want to recommend her for your consideration, and I think you've got, as somebody else said, three good candidates, so I guess it's a good way to be. You can't make a mistake necessarily, but it's going to be a hard choice, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much, too. Would anybody else wish to speak to the school board appointment? Let's call. Okay. I want to, on behalf of council, thank everyone who spoke today and everyone who's here today. This is, as you know, we make many appointments to boards and commissions, but the school board is a, is a critical, critical for our community in so many ways, and school boards essentially set policy for the school system, they make financial decisions for the school system. We refund those, but we rely on a school board that we interact with and have terrific relationships with. And I think what I've heard today is we've got three terrific candidates that I think we can work with. So going forward, we will have, we will interview the candidates and then make the appointment at our next council meeting in December. So again, thank all of you for being here today and for all of your input in this process. With that, I'll move to the next public hearing, which is PCR 15-024, repeal and reenact the zoning ordinance floodplain regulation, and this is proposed ordinance 15-25. Rodney, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayors, members of city council. The revised floodplain regulations are necessary to meet the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. The new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map are incorporated into these regulations. The city initially adopted the floodplain regulations in 2007, and this was also the last time the maps had been updated. To continue its eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program, the revised regulations must be adopted by the city by December 16, 2015. The National Flood Insurance Program enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance protection against losses from floods. This insurance is designed to provide an insurance alternative to disaster assistance to meet the escalating cost of repairing damage to buildings and their contents caused by floods. The city does not, if the city does not adopt the regulations, city residents will not have the opportunity to purchase flood insurance. Although we are not aware of any buildings that are in the 100-year floodplain, approximately three dozen residents have flood insurance. About two years ago, I received a list of all the policies in the city, culled through the several hundred properties, and found out most of them were actually in the adjoining counties. However, at that time, there were 37 properties that had flood insurance. I have reviewed those with the new floodplain maps, and none of them appear to have any buildings in the flood zone. In August of 2014, the city held a joint open house with James City County and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, staff to provide the public an opportunity to review the newly drafted preliminary flood risk information maps. And these are the new maps. The old maps, before, they were on four panels, now they're on nine, so it's a much higher resolution for the new maps. And Plan Director Reed Nestor has compiled some of these into three slides, and this first one shows an area in the flood zone near Piney Creek in the, to the south, Beechwood Drive. And initially, we were kind of concerned that a couple of the houses here might be in the flood zone. However, when I went back and looked at their foundation surveys, which had, showed a finished floor elevation, I found out that they were 15 to 20 feet above the flood level. And the second slide shows areas associated with College Creek, Paper Mill Creek, and Tudders Creek. And it's kind of hard to see on this, but it has an elevation AE of seven feet. And this is actually a reduction from the 2007 maps that showed it as 7.5 feet. So there are some areas that were shown in the flood zone in 2007 that will no longer be in the flood zone. But this backs up to Port Ann, Holly Hills, Burns Lane, and over here at Tudders Creek, next to the Port Pass Shopping Center. And the third area with some flood, with flood zone, is also AE elevation 7.5, which once again, I mean elevation of seven, which is a reduction from the previous 7.5. And this is on Queens Creek, and this backs up to Brandywine subdivision. The city is very fortunate, due to the topography, that there are, I guess, there really hasn't been a desire or demand to build within the floodplain. And of course, we also have the Chesapeake Bay regulations that precluded development with 100 feet of any RPA. I would note that at the open house, we publicly advertised that, and notices were mailed to 88 property owners that either had property in or near a floodplain. Deputy Director, Deputy Plan Director Carolyn Murphy and I attended that meeting, and we had four residents and a representative of the College of Williams, representative of Colony Williamsburg show up at our table. The proposed regulations that you have before you increases the current ordinance from approximately eight pages to 21 pages, and they were drafted from the model ordinance from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. And this meets the minimum requirements of FEMA, and we also incorporated two suggestions, and they are to exceed the minimum requirements by having an 18-inch freeboard, which is the height above flood level for all structures, and includes language that makes a repetitive loss structure also considered substantially damaged. Once again, staff is not aware of any structures that would be impacted by these requirements, and the new language may actually reduce their insurance rates. We have also been notified that the city does not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The city... The city will not be eligible for any federal funds for any future natural disaster, be their flood-related or not. I provided a copy of the draft ordinance to DCR, and they have noted that it meets all of FEMA's ordinance checklist. And FEMA will review the ordinance once it's been adopted by city council. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 14, and two persons spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended to city council by six to zero vote that the revised floodplain regulations be approved as detailed in the attached ordinance. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions before I open the hearing?
I do have one question. Mr. Rhodes, could you help me understand one thing? Twice, at least twice, you referenced the reduction to seven from 7.5. Is that reduction the level that the water has to rise to in order to be considered in the flood area? Or are you talking about the actual elevation of the land?
The elevation of the land, so by, I'm sorry, elevation of the flood, so it can go up seven feet before it impacts anything that's considered in the flood zone.
So anything that's more than seven feet above?
Is it outside of it? Yes, sir. So it's six inches.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Any other questions?
You said currently, I heard you said like 12 properties in the city currently have flood insurance?
No, 30. The information I received was about two years ago, and there were 37.
Okay. And do we know why, why we keep flood insurance? Maybe your lender required it, or?
Lender normally doesn't require it unless you are in a flood zone.
Right.
I did speak to one agent that said that their client was required to have flood insurance, and that was on Beechwood Drive. However, I think if they had a surveyor, you know, do a survey of their property and submit that, they would realize they're way outside of the flood zone and would not need it. I believe others do it just as a precaution. It's relatively inexpensive if you're not in the flood zone.
Okay.
If I could point out that the requirements are based on 100-year flood occurrence, and occasionally you get more rain than 100-year flood. So if you live close, it's a matter of how much risk you want to take as a property owner and whether or not you feel that that additional insurance is of value. The only way to be covered for water damage, water loss on a home is to hold a flood insurance policy through the National Flood Insurance Program. And so it's a personal choice of property owners whether or not they want that additional surety until at risk.
Any other questions?
Just an observation. When you were showing the map of College Creek, the elevation did move into the campus, onto the college. Is there any impact of this to the college across Jamestown Road? You know, there's some water there.
Shows it going up almost to Jamestown Road. I'm not aware of it encroaching in the college area. And this little area in here is actually the 500-year flood zone next to Jamestown.
Thank you.
Judy. Thank you, Rodney. We really appreciate it. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address this issue. Please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Vice Mayor.
It's hard to see a downside from approving this. And I really appreciate these opportunities for council to vote on something when the consequences of a vote a certain way are so extreme that it seems to make it impossible that anybody would consider it.
With that, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approved proposed ordinance 15-25.
Say. Have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please. Ms. Walton.
Ms. Walton, aye. Mr. Pond. Mayor Hallman. Vice Mayor Farling. Mr. Foster. Aye.
Rodney, thank you very much. Next is the Quarter Path Road vacation and conveyance. First is BCA 15-001, request of Battery Boulevard Associates LLC to vacate a portion of Quarter Path Road. This is a proposed ordinance 15-24. And the second is a conveyance of the vacated, unimproved portion of Quarter Path Road. Reed, welcome.
Battery Boulevard Associates owns the Cokes Mill parcel, which is on the northeast corner of Quarter Path Road and Battery Boulevard. They are proposing to vacate a three-tenths of an acre portion of the Quarter Path Road right-of-way, which is outlined in red on this map. The vacated right-of-way will be added to the existing five-acre Cokes Mill property, which is owned ED Economic Development District, which is also the same zoning as the adjacent Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center on the other side of Quarter Path Road. This area is planned for future development, and in the ED district, you can have a wide range of commercial and office uses, same as you see at Quarter Path Crossing Shopping Center. The city acquired the Quarter Path Road right-of-way through a VDOT quick claim deed in 2011. The right-of-way was originally acquired by VDOT for a grade separated interchange at Route 199 that was never built. You see, here's Quarter Path Road, Mounts Bay Road interchange, and the right-of-way that we acquired from VDOT is here. So you can see way more than you need from the road, and you can sort of imagine with the curving right-of-way where the entrance and exit ramps would have been for a grade separated interchange. But that interchange is not going to happen, and there's an excess right-of-way adjacent to the Cokes Mill property. The right-of-way at the vacation site's approximately 146 feet wide and would be reduced by 45 to 50 feet if the vacation were approved. Approved, that gives us a remaining right-of-way of 95 to 100 feet, which is an adequate width to have. The comprehensive plan calls for closing Quarter Path Road to vehicular traffic between this area and readout number one, and that would happen when a readout road is constructed, which would provide an alternate to this portion of Quarter Path Road. When vehicular traffic is eliminated, a 10-foot wide shared-use path will be constructed, which will tie into the shared-use path system for the Quarter Path at Williamsburg Development, and will also tie into the existing shared-use path along Quarter Path Road, which now ties into the new shared-use path along York Street, leading all the way up into the historic area. Council's practice in the past was to sell vacated rights-of-way, primarily paper streets, to the adjoining property owners for 25% of the value established by the city assessor. The assessed value for the right-of-way to be vacated, the area in red and the area shaded in red on this subdivision platte is $87,000 or $290,000 an acre. This case is different because Quarter Path Road is an improved street at this location, but with excess right-of-way, the excess right-of-way parcel is pretty much useless as a parcel by itself, but is of use to be combined with the Cokes Mill property. The city staff talked with the applicant, and we felt 25% in this particular case was too low, and we ended up with a figure of $30,000, which is 34 and 1/2% of the value established by the city assessor. And we felt, taking into consideration the conditions on this corner, that that was a reasonable offer. The staff recommendation is that the city council take two actions, and these need to be voted on separately. First would be to approve proposed ordinance 15-24, which will vacate the portion of the Quarter Path Road right-of-way, shown in red. And secondly, to approve the conveyance of the vacated, unimproved portion of Quarter Path Road to Battery Boulevard Associates LLC for a consideration of $30,000. And you have a draft deed in your packet for that conveyance. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have on this proposal.
Thank you very much, Reed. Let me turn to council for any questions before I open the public hearing.
Sure. Mr. Nestor, could you go back to the last map? The total right-of-way between the yellow line just to the left of the shopping center and to the end of the second red line is about 145 feet?
Yeah, that's 145 feet here and 45 to 50 feet.
No, I'm sorry, but from the red line, the total right-of-way, the width of that?
The total right-of-way from here to here is about 145 feet.
Right. And so we're only talking about vacating, the red section's only about 45 to 50 feet. And that leaves the approximately 95 to 100 feet that includes everything from the other red line across the road to the back of the shopping center.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, any questions?
No. Not at the moment.
All right, Judy. Jim Gressick, also representing the Battery Boulevard Associates LLC, is also present today. Do you have any questions of him?
I did have one question, Reed. On the other side of Battery Boulevard, I mean, that's an enormous right-of-way there for the road that's never going to happen. Who owns that piece of property?
This area here. That is owned by Quarter Path LLC. That is the successor to Riverside, and it's part of the whole Battery Boulevard parcel, the whole Riverside Development parcel.
Once there's a proposal to develop that piece, we can expect a similar request, because that's a really wide.
You know, there's always the option for requests to be made. There is a ravine coming through this area, so that makes this area here maybe not the best area for development.
Do you know why VDOT decided not to do the overpass then?
That was before my time, so.
I didn't think anything was going to come out of that.
I would assume money, money had something.
Well, I know there was a similar proposal for an overpass at Route 5 and 199. It never happened also. So, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, Reed. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this matter. If you wish to, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
May I ask Mr. Nestor another question? So in looking at the, the question's going to go to why the vacation of the right-of-way? So if you go to the other side of the road, it's clear that the right-of-way encroaches on the landscaped area that's directly behind the shopping center. It's grass primarily. So does, it seems to me the only reason to vacate the right-of-way would be if somebody was going to build a structure up to the road, otherwise they could just leave it landscaped and it wouldn't really impact, because you can still put a roadway access through there.
Well, you can, but for, when you're looking at this, the city zoning ordinance requires a 15-foot setback from the property line. So you're having to provide a 15-foot landscape strip back from this. If this is incorporated into the overall parcel, your landscape strip becomes essentially 15 feet behind the sidewalk where it normally is. So this, with, say, 45 to 50 feet, this gives you an additional 35 feet or so of buildable area that you can have for a building or for a parking lot. And I'd point out, too, that when you look at, and this is white it out a little bit, the property line is all the way back here, but you have 100, you have 100-foot RPA buffer. So that takes out 100 feet that you can't be used for the development.
Tends to push everything forward on the?
Yeah, so that makes, I think that makes this 45 to 50 feet in this area even more valuable. I think, I guess, in looking at the whole piece of property and looking at the city's best interest in the future and the development of this area, it seemed to me that allowing that little 50-foot wide piece to be incorporated into the Cokes Mill parcel and become part of that total development, and since it's land that the city doesn't need, you know, that could result, because of that additional footage, in a better development for that corner, which I think, of course, we want that to be a nicely developed area. So I think that, I think this is a justifiable thing to do to vacate that 50-foot portion.
Thank you. So my comment is that, you know, we talk a lot about economic development, but we want to help to stimulate the business economy, help existing businesses survive, grow, succeed, and thrive. And we want new businesses to come in and add to the mix complement what we already have, diversify the business portfolio, and make Williamsburg a more interesting place to visit and an attractive place to live. And oftentimes, to do that, we're willing to provide incentives to businesses to invest, whether it's an issue such as we did with Copper Fox, where we bought a hotel property and then turned around and let them redevelop it. Or it could be something as simple as an incentive program that we set up in a certain zoning district to stimulate business development. So here, we're talking about a piece of property that really has very little use, if any, to the city. It's somewhat, maybe small, but somewhat of an obstacle to the redevelopment or the development of this piece as a contributing asset to the business community and further enlivening the Quarter Path area. And we have an applicant that's asking for us to vacate the property, and then we'll get to the second question, about then sell them the property. Not give it to them, sell it to them. Granted, it might be at a reduced rate than what it would be had, but it's by itself, it does not have much utility or value. So to me, this makes great sense, and it is very much in line with what we have said over and over and over again about what we want to do to help Williamsburg be business-friendly while remaining sensitive to the residential aspect of the community, the aesthetic values of the community, and making it, continuing to make it attractive to our guests.
Along the line of Paul's reasoning, other decisions we've had to make have pinched our stock of commercial real estate in the city. This is an opportunity to make commercially zoned parcel more valuable, more useful. So to a degree, we're adding some commercial, commercially zoned land here. I think it's a smart, smart move in the long run. I appreciate Reed's pointing out the 100-foot buffer from Tutters Neck Pond. That, you know, we made decisions several years ago to allow that to be used as an RPA for that development. It's important to continue to protect that as a body of water.
I agree with all the things that were just said, but you know, clearly, I think the Cokes Mill property recently sold, and so, and the developer has some aspirations for this right-of-way. Clearly, it's in their best interest, and I think so if we can do this, take this piece of property that isn't really doing the city, you know, doing us any good sitting there, and it's used in a way that helps the developer fulfill their vision, I think it's, makes sense to me.
Judy.
Well, I'm going to preface what I'm going to say by saying I'm going to support this because I agree. But I do disagree with what Mr. Farling said about it being useless. I think leaving it there and the developer then has to go another 15 feet in does improve the viewscape. I mean, there is something to be said for landscaping and for putting a parking lot behind trees and stores behind trees. So I think, for me, I have to weigh the value of, are we paving the world or are we leaving a few trees, against the arguments you made, which I think are very valid in terms of the 100-yard, the buffer in the back and the size of the piece of property and the value, and the fact that there is economic to the value to the city, to selling this piece of land and putting something commercially viable on it. But I do think we always need to keep in mind, we keep saying we care what the city looks like, and we need to continue to. looks like, and we need to continue to care what the city looks like and to make sure we have trees and our corridors are protected and our viewscapes are protected. So, having said that, I'm going to support it.
I don't disagree with that, but that's why we have zoning ordinance.
Oh, yeah. I know.
Can I just say? And I totally respect what you're saying. The one thing that's interesting about this parcel, though, that I think Mr. Foster was talking about is what development happens, we really do want to happen farther away from Tutors Neck Pond.
Away from the pond, yeah.
Because that's being more environmentally careful and sensitive. And I take your point about, you know, more landscaping in the front is better. I totally agree. But in this case, I think there's some value in moving it a little farther out. So, thank you.
And the pond's playing a different role now than it's played in the past.
Yes, that's right.
Because it's a BMP for the whole development, so we have to be particularly careful there. I guess, Reed, one other question for you, and this is a question about the price. I understand you're sort of... What we've typically done in the past, but that's typically been done with, you know, those streets that have been done to property owners. This seems to me to be somewhat different in that this has real economic value to it. And I'm just wondering, is that $30,000 the right price or not? Could you tell me a little bit more about how... You told us how you reached that, so I think I understand that. But why sort of the third rather than a half or something? What sort of your thinking about that?
Well, I don't have any magic formula to share with counsel. I guess when we were talking with the developer on the value for it, it was clear that the 25% was too low, and we negotiated this $30,000 figure. And from the city's standpoint, we felt that this was an appropriate figure. It ended up at 34.5%. So, 25%...
It was negotiated between the city, and that's... Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
One more comment about that. And I was wondering the same question earlier in the week when I was speaking to Mr. Collins. And how do you... Are you using... And I'm not asking you this question, Reed, I'm just talking. Are you using some comp value in order to create the valuation here? Or are we considering what the real value of this parcel is developed as a commercial center on the... Right next to or as part of an already very active and heavily utilized shopping center? And, you know, are we... So, are we signing the right value to the property even through the assessor's office? And the more I thought about it, what I came back to was we could potentially get up to $57,000 more if we got full value for it. I would guess that over the next 10 years, if we sell this property and the shopping center, if this parcel is developed appropriately, we will make far more than that by this center being as successful as it possibly can be. So, that's the whole idea behind economic development. You don't quite maybe get as much when you're selling it on the front side because you're going to get it on the backside in tax revenues that are going to benefit the city for a much longer term.
No question, Collins. Any other comments? If not, we need to do these as two separate motions. I'll take a motion on the BCA 15-01.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the proposed ordinance 15-24 vacating a portion of Quarter Path Road right of way.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
And second is the conveyance of the vacated unapproved portion of Quarter Path Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the conveyance of the vacated unapproved portion of Quarter Path Road to Battery Boulevard Associates LLC for consideration of $30,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Reed, thank you very much for all your work on this. Next order of business are reports. First, the monthly financial statements. Mr. Collins, anything in particular to point out?
In the interest of time, I'll point out that the typically reported numbers are slightly higher than they were in the previous year.
Any questions?
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to fill them.
That's brief. Monthly department operating reports, anything to point out?
I'd just point out under city manager with citywide employee turnover rate, with that rate being about four times higher than previous year, that what the city has experienced is an increased number in retirements over several departments in addition to the normal churn in public safety departments. So, if there's any question about a higher percentage there, that's an anticipated issue as we've discussed in the past dealing with succession within our organization.
Terrific. Any questions?
One other on economic development, the value of new commercial construction and new retail footage added. That's the new Aldi grocery store that was permitted. Those are based on permits. And the renovated square footage, that square footage is the Movie Tavern project.
Thank you. Any questions on operating reports? That brings us to city manager reports, and the first is the fiscal year 2015 school year-end spending plan. This is proposed resolution 15-20.
The city received a request from the Williamsburg James City County School Board after they adopted a spending plan on September 15th for year-end funds totaling, at that time, Since that time, with the audited numbers, they have $1,352, $352 total savings. That's unspent funds from the budgeted amount. And what the current agreement allows with the school system and the county and city is that the schools pay the jurisdictions back that amount, and then they're allowed to come back and request an additional allocation or supplemental allocation of funds and additional appropriation, if you will. And so, the school board considered that and did request funds based on the original amount. And so, they requested $1,279,823, of which the city's portion is $123,887. And with the audited amount, the remaining $7,038 would go into our general fund as unspent funds returned to the city. The school system has requested that the funds be used to purchase textbooks and for school buses. The city staff reviewed the numbers and recommended that the city support the full allocation request from the school system. School system staff is here to answer any questions you may have regarding the request, if you have questions about any particular item. And our financial director, Phil Serra, can brief you on any financial considerations involved in the request. But the manager's recommendation is to approve.
Terrific. Thank you. And I will recognize the two school board members that are here. Thank you for being here, as well as the administrators from the school system. So, thank you all for being here today. Let me turn to counsel for any comments, discussion, questions.
Two comments, I guess. We've known for years that we have a problem with an aging bus fleet, and over the past several, it's been a real challenge to provide the resources to purchase enough new vehicles to keep up with the recommended replacement plan that's in place. And when you see that... I was just looking for the number here, that 14 of the 82 buses have more than a quarter of a million miles on them? Well, sure, a lot of people drive cars 250,000 miles, but a lot of people aren't doing 250,000 miles on all local driving, much less carrying 30 or 40 children in their car with them. So, when you get to the point where a bus has reached a certain age, it really is our obligation to people... The people, the families in this community who entrust their children to us to be transported to and from school deserve to have that done as safely as possible. I'm not saying that these vehicles aren't safe. I'm just saying that we are getting to the point where if we don't really start to move on the replacement of these buses, we're going to get so far behind the curve that it's going to be hard to catch up. So, I think from that standpoint, that use of the money makes perfect sense. The other thing that I really like about this system where the schools can work to keep their belts tight, they start out with a proposed budget. We all do. We never know how it's going to play out over the course of the year, but they're encouraged or incented to keep their expenses in line to the degree that they can then save some money at the end of the year and defray some of these capital expenses out of surplus from the operating budget. And again, I think it's a great system. I think they should be commended and rewarded for the efforts that they make to do that because we've already allocated and spent this money. That doesn't mean the money's not just as valuable as any other dollar. It doesn't mean it's not important to us. But when we can then take the savings that they reap and apply them to a capital expense program, that's money we will not have to spend later on. So, I just want to say thanks to our school representatives for doing this. I applaud you for choosing the buses as a method or a component of your capital budget to fund, and I just hope we can make more progress on this because I have children riding those buses too, so that's all.
Scott and Doug?
Just a couple of things. I certainly agree with Paul about the buses. In fact, we had this conversation. We had a joint meeting with the school board and the board of supervisors, and the school system laid out very good numbers that I've still got somewhere at home about the need for the buses. And to me, this is just the logical follow-up to that meeting. And, you know, nobody can oppose buying textbooks. I do have a question. When are we going to get to the point where we get an iPad for everybody in the schools? Are... Do we have a plan? I mean, it seems to me that textbooks are very expensive and lose their value practically the day they're published. And it seems to me, the way the world is going, we ought to have a plan to give every child an iPad or something, you know?
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor.
Good afternoon.
Members. Basically, we're moving on a very slow path towards a one-to-one program for our students. We have currently got a one-to-one into our middle school, and this year, we're rolling out to two more middle schools. So, very slowly, training teachers and getting students prepared, we're moving towards a one-to-one environment. And the technology is now in our operation...
Great. Thank you.
But generally, when we buy textbooks and put them on these devices, there's still an expense to them.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that. No, no. I just... I've been reading quite a lot about this, and I just got back from a couple of weeks with my granddaughter who's in school in New York. And I'm just interested in the technology aspects and how quickly we can move for our child because it's important. I mean, they need to be able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, moving city council approved resolution 15-20 FY 2015 school year ending spending plan.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Chair.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Next is the legislative issues for the 2016 General Assembly. This is proposed resolution 15-18. We had a substantive presentation and discussion on Monday about this. Staff was asked to prepare a cover memo with priorities on it, and so, Jody, all yours.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. As requested, we've looked at the priorities, the 13 priorities that were identified and discussed in detail from Monday's work session. And our recommendation is that four of the priorities be listed as top priorities for the city. Those include funding for public education, I-64 widening project, tourism promotion funding, and the cost of water quality. So, these would be, in addition to the other priorities sent to our legislative delegation, but when asked, what are our top priorities, our recommendation would be that we would state these would be the top four. So, in addition to that, attached on your iPad is the revised agenda with just some minor revisions in wording. You'll see we've changed the word historic triangle to greater Williamsburg to better reflect the conversation we had on Monday. So, it is the recommendation... Recommendation that council approve resolution 15-18 supporting the certain local and state legislative priorities as presented, and that a cover letter with the top priorities, the adopted resolution, and the full legislative agenda be sent to the city's legislative delegation prior to our meeting within December.
Terrific. Jody, thank you and everyone else on staff who put this together. So, thank you very much. Let me turn to counsel for any questions, comments.
Thank you. Likewise, Ms. Miller, I know it's a lot of work to pull this together. It's even more work to listen to our conversation on Monday and come back with something sensible out of it, so we really appreciate that. I do want to mention one other thing that I don't think really belongs on the legislative priorities, but I would, when we meet with our representatives, it's something I would like to bring up, so I just want to share that with you. If anybody thinks it's a bad idea, I will refrain from doing that. But earlier in this year, we were given some... As a result of a change by the General Assembly, we had the tax deferral or forgiveness for the spouses of military active duty who were killed in the line of duty, active duty personnel. And the first version of that was... Didn't make sense, and I think people recognize that. So, I guess it was a constitutional amendment that allowed that to happen. So, the General Assembly then, even though they did the constitutional amendment one way, they were able to come back without a second constitutional amendment to correct some of the seeming inequities in the way it was written where you wouldn't qualify for any forgiveness if your house was worth over a certain amount, which made no sense. So, the one thing I would like to ask our representatives to ask the General Assembly to consider is that, I might be mistaken, but I don't believe that the majority of families where a spouse is killed in combat own their own home. Some do, but it's a basically... It's a more transient population. They're being reassigned every couple of years from location to location. Folks who are service or enlisted people, it's hard for them to afford a home in this area, so a lot of these folks are renting. So, you have a spouse... You have this wonderful way of saying, you know, "Very sorry for the sacrifice your family has given. We want to find small ways to make life easier for you. Here's one. We'll give you some forgiveness on your real property tax, but only if you own a home." So, if you're a renter, there's nothing for you. Well, to me, that's a really hollow gesture. So, why wouldn't we then say you can either qualify for the forgiveness on the real property tax if you own a home, or if you don't own a home, we'll give you some consideration on the state income tax? And just try to make a level playing field for everybody so that one sacrifice is not valued differently than somebody else's. So, I don't... We can... I'll talk individually with folks later, but I just want to share that with you before I bring it up with our delegates.
I've asked you questions the last time about regulating internet-based business. Ms. Sheldon did a very good job explaining what the city's motivation is here. Would you like to reiterate that, or you want me to try to?
I was just explaining to you that there are some technical amendments that really need to be made with how the information is reported from the Department of Motor Vehicles for particularly Uber and Lyft-type businesses that are regulated by the state but are still businesses in our jurisdiction, and we need to clarify how that reporting is made.
More or less, cities need to know when one of those businesses is licensed, if that business, especially a car, is garaged in jurisdiction because they need to have a business license. So, I appreciate that explanation, and I appreciate the intent there, and I agree with it. My problem is, that's not what this bullet says. The city strongly believes that the General Assembly should take action to regulate private enterprises employing a business model. We're asking for information. We're not necessarily asking for regulation. I'm maybe the only one, but I, you know, I don't think that the state regulating this type of business is the best way forward, but I'll leave that for discussion.
You could bring it up like Paul does.
You know, my take on this, and I step back and I think, yo, any time the public sector looks to regulate or deregulate... the public sector looks to regulate or deregulate an area, we really have to sort of take a look at sort of, you know, what is the public interest here? If there are regulations in existence, why were they put in? Are they still doing what they were supposed to do, and what have you? So I think the whole question of, and maybe we want to rephrase it, is that I think the state needs to take a look at the whole regulatory structure as it interfaces with the sharing economy, and come up with a model that will work for traditional businesses as well as sharing economy businesses, and create a level playing field for them. I'm not sure we've done that, I think there are some cities and communities and some states that are doing bits and pieces, but ultimately, you know, we really need to do a comprehensive review of the regulatory structure and how it interfaces with the sharing economy, and maybe we want to sort of phrase it more that way, sort of, rather than regulate, look at the regulatory structure relative to the sharing economy.
Well said.
Jody, does that make some sense to you?
Got it. I can answer your question.
So, you know, and so I take your point, I think it's right, but I think it's, you know, there are, you know, the devil in the detail types of things that Chris talked about, but there's also a bigger, you know, sort of regulatory philosophy structure that we really haven't addressed, and I think maybe we need to ask our delegation to, let's start thinking about this in a broader sense.
Right.
If you added a phrase at the end of the last sentence that included the words, "to provide a level or an economic environment of equity for similar businesses that retains necessary protections to the public interest," or consumer protections. That's really what we're asking here for, is we have, in several cases, businesses that are providing a similar service, but because one has a different form of technology, they're regulated differently under state law. And it's not as simple as the horse-drawn carriage and the automobile. It's about the consumer protections placed on one business due to incidents at the time of that business becoming prevalent in today's, in society in the past, versus an efficiency with the new technology that may or may not. It's yet to be determined if they have the same consumer protection issues that should be covered there, and so it's a bullet that's trying to look, ask the state, regulate the use with the consumer protections appropriately, and not use technology in the lens of the day to put aside that consumer protection, whether it's regulate or deregulate.
But a similar argument can be made, you know, you look at the, one of the upper bullets about tax policy reform, and we talked about internet sales on hotels, you know, the internet's a common denominator in this unregulated enterprise, and so maybe that broader discussion is, you know, how do we, how do we, I hate regulation necessarily, but how do we, how do we make more equitable what happens on the internet and what happens in, you know, land-based business?
Can I, just like what you want is another suggestion, but just on the wording of this, and just tell me if this captures the essence of what you're thinking, Mr. Foster. "The city strongly believes that the General Assembly should take action to ensure that private enterprises employing a business model that emphasizes the use of the internet to either provide retail or facilitate lodging or ride-sharing services do not have an unfair advantage over similar regulated businesses." So we're not saying to, that you have to regulate this, just don't punish the person who's not an internet business and with regulation.
That's just what I was getting at.
What that leaves out is that in doing this, you might want to take a look at the existing regulations and change, I mean, it's not just, you know, a lot of the discussion is extending regulations to cover this, when maybe the discussion should be about, how do you extend this to deregulate other areas?
And that's why I say, just to ensure that one segment does not have an unfair advantage over the other. You're just, it's going back to what we said on Monday, it's really about leveling the playing field. And to some degree, there may be public safety issues involved, if it's ride-sharing.
I think, I think in our face-to-face discussion with, but that wording's fine, unless anybody has objection, that wording would be fine, and then I think when we have our face-to-face with the legislative delegation, I think we can.
And just because it's on our agenda, doesn't mean they're necessarily going to do it the way we would.
I thought the General Assembly always did. Okay, anything else? We need to pass the proposed resolution as modified?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council approve Resolution fifteen dash eighteen as modified, supporting certain local and state legislative priorities, and that a cover letter with the top priorities, adopted resolution, and full legislative agenda be sent to the city's legislative delegation prior to the December meeting.
Second. Have a motion, a second, call the roll, please Chair.
Ms. Nixon.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Mayor Homan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Next is revenue sharing funds for fiscal year seventeen, this is proposed Resolution fifteen dash nineteen. Aaron Weller.
Lou. Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff is once again requesting for permission to apply for revenue sharing funds from VDOT. Past projects funded through this program include our five sidewalks project completed in two thousand ten, Prince George and Armistead Avenue project completed in two thousand fourteen, the eight sidewalks project completed last year, and the York Street project, which is currently under construction, as well as our upcoming Ironbound Long Hill Road intersection improvements, and our two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen paving schedules are also funded by this program. The revenue sharing program allows the city to gain more value out of our local dollars by leveraging them fifty-fifty with VDOT funds, with only a little state oversight required, which makes this a very advantageous funding source for local governments. For fiscal year two thousand sixteen, the Commonwealth Transportation Board approved a state match of just over one hundred and eighty-nine million dollars for two hundred and fifty-eight projects through the Commonwealth, two of these projects were for the city. For fiscal year two thousand seventeen, we are requesting additional maintenance funds, maintenance funds for paving under this project, just as we have for the prior two years. And in two thousand twelve, the Commonwealth Transportation Board changed the rules and allowed for maintenance projects, which includes asphalt resurfacing to apply for revenue sharing funds, whereas previously, the program only funded full construction projects. For many years, the city has allocated a fixed dollar amount for annual pavement resurfacing program, but the costs for asphalt have increased dramatically over the past decade. The additional revenue sharing funds allows us to double the amount of work we can perform and keep us on track with our scheduled street maintenance efforts. Should the funds be granted, we intend to resurface approximately five point three three miles of roadway, and currently, the city maintains about fifty-one point two miles of streets, so the fiscal year two thousand seventeen request would provide maintenance on about ten point four percent. Before you today is a resolution supporting this application, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have about the proposed revenue sharing program request.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions at this point?
I have a comment and a question. First, I just want to say, because we're talking about street repaving, Mr. Clayton, Mr. Small, the whole team, they have done a fantastic job on Jamestown Road. I mean, the difference today versus a year ago is just remarkable, and I think it makes a real difference to the visitors who come here, to the students who are up and down those streets, to the residents all around Jamestown Road, it, I mean, it just looks like a real street now. But, Mr. Small, how ambitious is this compared to any other year? Is this a normal approach, or are we going a little bit farther with hoping to get the VDOT revenue sharing?
I would say, last year was our probably most ambitious request, because we included our Ironbound Road, Long Hill Road construction project in that request, and it was pretty ambitious. Our chances were a little lower because of that, however, we feel that this year's request, being only the half million dollars for revenue sharing funds, we think it's reasonable and feel like our chances are good. The revenue sharing program is getting ready to undergo great changes, they're starting to scale it back to what it was many years ago, in favor of the HB two legislation. And so because of that, they're predicting in the probably five to ten-year range that from the one hundred and eighty-nine million dollar program, it'll scale back to about a fifty million dollar program. So at this point, we're leveraging as much as we can to try to get as much maintenance as we can.
And I'm sorry, what was the timeframe that you expected?
Probably five years or so.
It's funny how the HB two timeframe only goes out six years, and they're already planning on cutting back money from this to support something they haven't committed to fund beyond six years. On here, you list, the streets that are on here, Francis Street, York Street, South Boundary, are these in any sort of order?
No, no particular order as far as priority, those are just the ones that we've listed for what we expect to hit next year. That may change depending on the severity of this winter, and how some other streets may just jump out to say, this street really needs it. Jamestown Road was an excellent example of that, it actually was not slated to be paved this past cycle, but because of the prior two winters were so severe, the concrete joints really jumped out there and caused a really bumpy ride, and that road really took a beating over those winters. And so that's why it kind of leapt up. And so what we do is, we try to tell you what, these are what we anticipate to do in fiscal year seventeen, but it is kind of subject to change.
And on the list, it says Holly Hills not paved in two thousand fifteen?
The portion that was not paved this year.
Okay. So it, I'm just curious, would something like that move higher up on the list, because it's completing a project, it just really depends on the condition of the road?
It really depends on the condition. We don't have to actually set it in stone until about a year from now.
Okay, thank you.
Cost also plays a role in addition to condition, if we're able to get three smaller segments done with a small amount of money, those might jump something that needs to be done, based just on condition, but not have enough funding to do.
Well, I think it's good that we apply, there's never opportunity to get, you know, state dollars coming this way, we ought to take advantage of it. And I appreciate the discussion on the priorities, because I'd like to see that, we'll look at Lafayette Street, because it's coming unglued, and it's going to need some attention, and so.
It's on our current schedule for this spring.
Judy?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve Resolution fifteen dash nineteen to authorize a city manager to proceed with applying for FYI seventeen VDOT revenue sharing funds and to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the revenue sharing program.
Second. Have a motion, a second, call the roll, please Chair.
Ms. Nixon.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Mayor Homan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Final city manager report is the planning commission representative on the architectural review board. Reed, welcome again.
Planning Commission Chair Demetrius Florakis is the commission's representative on the architectural review board. He's unable to serve for the remainder of two thousand fifteen, and requests that Planning Commission member Jeffrey Cleese, who's also a past member of the ARB, be appointed to serve as Planning Commission's representative on the ARB for the remainder of two thousand fifteen, which is when Mr. Florakis's terms expires. This raises a question of the appointment procedure for a Planning Commission representative on the architectural review board. As it's now written in our ordinance, and as it has worked over the years, unlike the other commission boards and commission where the chair appoints the members, the commission recommends a member to council, and council appoints the member. What you have before you is a proposed change to the appointment procedure that could be considered, and that would rather than having council appoint the Planning Commission representative, it would let the chair appoint the Planning Commission representative. So the staff recommendations are two-part for this issue. The first is that council appoint Mr. Cleese as the commission's representative for a term expiring on December thirty-first of this year, replacing Mr. Florakis. And number two, that council refer the draft ordinance for changing the appointment procedure to Planning Commission's for its review and recommendation.
I'd like to read. Any questions, comments?
I have a question or two. Mr. Nestor, when council makes the appointment of the planning commission member to the ARB, where does council normally get that recommendation from?
From the planning commission.
In your story of time here, do you recall ever the city council not going with the planning commission recommendation?
That has never happened.
So this just seems like one more bureaucratic step we're taking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't disagree with that. Can you speak to why city council has held on, put themselves in that position, and is there a precedent that was set as to why we make that appointment?
When we set up the architectural review board back in nineteen ninety-one, this was the way it was set up. I think, you know, I wrote that ordinance way back then, I think looking at it in retrospect, it would have made more sense to have the commission appoint its own representative to the board.
Since you wrote it, I mean, what was your thinking?
Seemed like a good idea.
You're much smarter now than you were.
It says we're not agile, it's only tables, thirty years.
Well, my only thought would be, you know, why tie the hands of future councils if there is, ever is, an issue, and, you know, while in this case, I think appointing Jeffrey Cleese is, you know, is not the question here, but I don't know that we need to make the second decision, but I can go either way, I just don't want to tie the hands going forward, if ever there is an issue.
But the council could always come back and make the change if they wanted to, is that correct?
It could be changed back, like this change, a change to the zoning ordinance requires an amendment of the ordinance, which requires the Planning Commission City Council public here.
So what other appointments are made by the chair of the planning commission?
On the planning commission, we have the members of the Site Plan Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, and we, you know, we had the Beautification Advisor Committee, and that committee has been changed, so they're not doing that, and we did have the Regional Issues Committee, and that committee has been dissolved.
And the planning commission now has a representative to the EDA?
Yes, they do, it's not a, they appoint a liaison to the EDA, not a member of the EDA.
And we do appoint all the other members of the ARB, so maybe that was part of the reason.
That's where it comes from.
I mean, one other way of looking at it is, we spend a lot of time and effort interviewing and finding the best candidates that we can to serve on the planning commission. Our hope would be that anybody who's in that role is going to understand the importance of the architectural review board, and it's a lot more work to do that. I mean, ARB's meeting twice a month, and there are a lot of cases to come through there, depending on level of activity in the community, so, I mean, I just think we have such a good pool to draw from.
And I think that's an important distinction, is, you know, since we've already appointed him to planning commission, presumably that person would be qualified or adequate to serve on ARB, so.
You know, I...
I mean, I, I, I think it would be different if, if sort of they were appointing sort of someone to one of our boards or commissions sort of independently, but they're just choosing from among. So, I think this, this just cuts out a step that's really not, not a necessary step.
I can support that.
I take it Mr. Clea is willing to do this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that City Council appoint Jeffrey Clea as Planning Commission's representative on the Architecture Review Board for a term expiring on December 31, 2015.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Mr. Nissen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye. Thank you for catching that. City Attorney Report.
Nothing today.
Unfinished business brings us to new business, which is QuarterPath Community Development Authority appointment, proposed Resolution 15-21.
May I just make the motion? Do your presentation, too. Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt Resolution 15-21, appointing Charles D. Brooks to the QuarterPath Community Development Authority for a term to expire July 31, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Mr. Nissen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
That brings us to our final agenda item, which is open forum at time, and anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may do so. I have one speaker in charge, Mr. Gary Shelley. Gary, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gary Shelley, and I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I'm speaking today not only for myself, but for other citizens who have been upset about numerous illegal intrusions by city personnel onto or into their properties. I would like to acknowledge a letter that you may have mailed to me last month, and I would like to thank you, on behalf of all of us, for assurances, of which I'll quote from your letter, that the city has addressed deficiencies which existed in the city's inspection process, that steps have been taken to ensure that inspections are in all cases conducted properly and appropriately, the notices are to be provided prior to inspections, and your regret of the frustration that we have felt in our experiences with staff members, especially those occurrences when staff failed to address compliance. I would also like to acknowledge that in your letter, you know the council is pleased that I am able to report a constructive and amicable experience with the current codes compliance staff. This staff has earned my trust. In fact, I recently removed some no trespassing signs that I had posted on some of my properties. I put these signs up some years ago at the suggestion of our police department, not to deter common miscreants from trespassing, but to make it easier for the police to deal with codes compliance personnel if they were caught unlawfully snooping in backyards or photographing veteran windows. It's time to put these incidents behind us and move forward, although your letter did leave some questions unanswered, such as, who read and discussed Mrs. Kristofferson's letter, and why repeated appearances before the council by your constituents were not responded to. Nonetheless, we thank you for the changes that have been made. There are other areas of concern, of which I have spoken over the years, which have still not been addressed. It is essential that civil dialogue take place between citizens and their elected representatives. Last month, I once again brought to your attention the issue of missing minutes from a council retreat. Obviously, there are questions regarding why these legally mandated minutes were not included in our official records. There has still been no response to these concerns. I will say once again, a culture has been established here whereby you do not hold yourself accountable or each other accountable. This culture must be broken. In order for a democracy to work effectively, citizens not only have a right to voice their concerns to their elected representatives, but they have a duty to voice them. Dialogue, however, is a two-way exercise. When citizens bring a concern to your attention, they expect and deserve a response. When ignored, they rightfully feel disrespected. Such disrespect inevitably engenders cynicism, mistrust, and ill will. I wish to once again thank you for your letter. I understand and appreciate how painfully difficult it was for you to write it. I don't intend to speak again about the fiasco at the Kristofferson's property, but there are other issues that I have previously brought to your attention that need to be addressed, and I will persist until they are responded to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anyone else wish to speak to council on any matter? Not any other business for today? I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm not, I'm so fast.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we have a closed session.
Oh, we do, we do. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing property matters per sub-paragraph three regarding acquisition of property for economic development of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining or negotiation strategy of a public body, and the disposition of city property of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Nissen?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
We'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene in closed session.